Or weight, like you were saying.
Yeah.
But I think size too, because if you need a truck to deliver it, if you need equipment to install it, I mean, that starts to become something that's different than the flamingo, I think, that was mentioned at one meeting.
Yeah.
I don't pick up a steel, I don't pick up a steel fire pit and put it in the backseat of my car.
So it requires a bobcat or?
You can pick it up in your pickup, but you can't pick it up in?
You can get a small.
I like, I like my immobile, because if you have a steel fire pit, you, I know what you're saying, but you still can move it. If I put in a stone fire pit in the patio.
Well, that's a fixture.
You could, you could move it, but it's, it'd take an awful lot.
So did you want to think about landscape fixtures and study ornamentation?
Let's just say fixtures, and then they can put the, they can put a concrete, they can, you know, put a concrete base, and then a layer of adhesive, and then it becomes a fixture.
All right, so it would become?
It's a defined real estate term. It's something that I think the building inspector can rely on and interpret.
It's replacing the word ornamentations with fix, with fixtures.
So, and, it would be, and landscape fixtures needed to implement a specific landscape design.
So striking the word fix and putting land, and then replacing ornamentations with fixtures?
With fixtures, yep.
There's gonna be gray area, but it's, it's, it's limiting the gray, it's limiting the gray area substantially.
Still like my immobile fixture.
Well, we'll keep that under advisement, Mike, it's a good one. So, all right, four. No business activities or sales other than those identified in three above are authorized by the special permit. So, we had looked at saying, well, this thing is authorized by that special permit, and that thing is authorized by that other special permit, and you were all concerned about naming specific authorized activities. So this says, this sort of does it in the negative. It says, here's what we've defined in three, that's all we're authorizing. We're not authorizing anything else, that's it. So, it's belts and suspenders, but.
But.
Yes?
If there's an involvement with a nursery use, then if we don't allow it, the nursery use gets blown out of the water.
We're not.
In other words, they can't sell mulch to their, uh?
We've just told them they can sell mulch that's up here. And three, we say that they can sell mulch.
And the nursery can sell mulch too, isn't?
That's under the nursery?
Isn't? Don't you see that there is a similarity of, of?
I see that there's a similarity, I don't?
I see the point. I think the concern, I, I think where Alex is, is this where you're going, is, do they have to have separate mulch bins for the nursery landscaping?
We've limited the quantity of the mulch that they can have on site.
I understand, but from the standpoint of Alex's point, we don't want to end up in a situation here where they use the same bin to service the nursery and the landscaping business, and suddenly we've aggregated the businesses and?
So how do you want to deal with that?
Well, I think that if you're saying with this materials limit, that it's only for the landscaping business?
Yeah, that's total materials limit.
Well, okay, so.
I, that's, that's all they get to have on site, or over there in the year, rather.
That has to be clear later then.
Yep, and we'll make, make sure we, when we get there, it's clear.
The, the materials are going to be handled because of this commonality.
Yeah.
In accordance with the procedures that we establish here.
Agreed.
All the materials are going to be handled that way.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree, yeah. I don't have a, I don't have, I'm just saying that they can't sell, we've said that they can sell these things, we are not authorizing any other sales. They may have sales that they can do, like, for example, Christmas trees, under the nursery, but we are not authorizing those sales under the special permit. That's all I'm trying to say.
That's right where I went with number four, Christmas trees.
Yeah, and if this language doesn't make that clear, then we need to figure out another way, but I tried it the other way first and got pushback that that's not how you want to do it, so this is the two.
I think, I think what you're saying, by this special permit, that's?
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, I agree. I think, I think this language is fine, but you just said something else that, that was intriguing, and that's just the idea that this is all the material they can have on site.
I mean, not on site, I meant to say annually, that was a slip of the tongue.
That's fine, annually, but how are we, how can we say that?
We'll get there, I'm thinking as you said, we'll get there.
It goes further.
But we're not enforcing those other uses.
Well, we haven't found?
But they have, they have told us what their 2012 levels are for materials on site.
Not for landscaping.
No, that's for the whole thing, that's what, that's what we asked them for.
So we, I think we probably have to add a little bit in.
We have to just tweak that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Exclusive of other businesses.
Yes.
Inclusive.
Inclusive, inclusive of other businesses.
This is?
Right.
This is all you get to buy for both businesses.
I would suggest, under number four, that they can sell landscaping services.
You mean under number three?
No, we said four.
They can sell landscaping, landscaping services might be a good thing.
Might be, yeah.
Yeah.
That's their business.
Might, you know, nice, why don't we make that A, and then we'll bump everything else down, so.
Yep.
Don't the, are those business activities in, in, in the zoning?
No, they can do it.
Well, it says that it's a business concern that operates to construct, install, and maintains lawns, trees, yards, shrubs, gardens, patios, related grounds, and other outdoor areas owned by other, but Alex has a valid point, that we should in fact say that they can sell those sort of things.
Landscape installations and services.
Yeah.
Why do we need number four?
Hang on, I'm writing.
I think you explained that was a, that was a, I was gonna say a double negative or something, but it's a?
Belts and suspenders.
Yeah, no, you said that, now I was trying to figure out a different way to say it, but it's just to say that this, this is all where, under this special permit.
If you think it's too much, if you think three is clear enough.
Well, my concern, well, I'm concerned about what Alex just raised. I don't want to get in a situation where somebody says that the landscaping and the nursery businesses are happening at the, are being commingled, and therefore the landscaping regulations apply. And now our special permit for landscaping says, as Alex pointed out, you can't have a nursery, you can't have anything but landscaping.
No, that's not what it says. All it says is that this special permit is only authorizing the things above. So I'm saying anything about any of the other businesses, and we've said, now, think about it over, you know, between now and the next meeting, and if we still have issues, we can come back and revisit it, I don't have a problem with that.
But this, if there's any involvement between the landscaping services and the nursery uses, then if it's not covered in this permit, it's not covered. And then the nursery is out of luck.
No?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
No, because the involvement includes things like operations, and maybe that's what we should make clear when we talk about involvement, is that it's the operations, the involvement is the operations of the two businesses. So things like storage of mulch, storage of fertilizer, how the trucks move around on the site, this special permit governs all of that, whether it's nursery or landscaping.
Contrary to what you said, this says loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscaping business is not allowed on Sunday.
Yes.
But they can take a piece of equipment and load me a bucket of mulch in the back of my truck on Sunday.
Yes, and in fact?
That's, that's, that, I believe is true, but what Alex was just saying is, if we don't cover it in here, then they can't do it in the nursery. I think they can do it on the nursery.
Well, that brings us actually to number five, so let's segue to that and then use it, because number five is the landscaping business hours. If you remember, in the special permit, it allows us to limit the nursery loading and use of noisy equipment on Sundays to 10 to 3:00. And that had been in the order, draft order of conditions that we'd been looking at, some pushback saying, we don't want to touch nursery, so I've taken it out, and I've only had the landscaping business hours in here. Now, the special, the decision in 2001 defines specific hours that they can use. I guess the question, and you can see that in the red text there, is how do you want to deal with that 10 to 3:00 of nursery?
On Sunday?
On Sunday. Do you want to include it in the special permit? Do you want to include the other nursery hours in the special permit? Or do you just want to have the landscaping hours only?
Landscaping, that's it.
And the special permit deals with the nursery hours.
How are you going to determine this?
What do you mean?
I mean, that's fine.
Designated the vehicles.
If you say it, if you say it, and how's the building inspector going to figure this out?
I mean, the reality is, the building inspector's not gonna be there on Sunday anyway, but the, we've designated that there's two vehicles that can be used. We've, I've added language to say that they have to be inscribed or engraved in such a way that it makes clear that, you know, vehicle one and two are being used for those purposes. If you get a picture?
Exclusively for the landscaping purposes.
Exclusively for the landscaping purposes.
What happens if vehicle two breaks down?
Well, then you're gonna have to get it fixed.
And, and so the building?
Bobcats, identify as such in Article 4.5, is the only bobcats allowed to operate on Sundays.
Wait, why can't you just say no more than two vehicles can operate on Sundays?
That's another option, is you could say that only two vehicles at any given time can operate.
Now you're regulating more than the landscaping use with this permit if you do that.
Yeah, but that's because there's an involvement between the two, and the zoning says you can regulate them. But if you look at the, what the, the bobcats, look at the bobcats, the use of the bobcats, four and five.
One more card, yeah.
The nursery bobcats and the landscaping bobcats have an exactly similar description of vehicle use.
Yes, I do. Yep, as do the?
I would, I would suggest that there was, there would seem to be a overlap.
There's also, nursery trailer one has pickup and delivery of plant material, and landscaping trailer two just delivers plant material.
I understand. In many events, since we're limiting these, all these vehicles, whatever they're used for, as being the vehicles that can be used on the site.
So no matter what or any number of bobcats they use on Sunday, the worst that could use them is between 10 and 2:00?
If we put 10 and, yeah, 10 and 3:00 actually.
Not, not relative to what we're doing, relative to the special permit that already exists.
No, the special permit allows it to run Sundays 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Oh.
So if we limit the nursery, we're creating a, we're using the special permit zoning under three N to create an additional limitation for the nurseries on Sundays. Right now, they have 9:00 to 6:00, so, for bobcat use. So the question is, do we leave it as 9:00 to 6:00, or do we limit it to 10 to 3:00?
We're back to hours again, sorry, still on vehicles.
We're back to hours again. Well, they're kind of related.
If you, if you play with the vehicle issue for one second, say they get a new bobcat.
New?
You realistically want that new bobcat to work at the nursery, but if you're replacing the landscape bobcat, you're out of luck, because the new one's going to be a lot quieter than the older one. So realistically, you want no more than two bobcats, so that when the first one goes down, you know that from now on, they'll be getting the new one at the nursery.
Well, you want it used for both, so that is really quiet.
There's no reason they can't re-identify the vehicles with a can of spray paint. I mean, the way I have this written under rules for vehicles on, I don't know what page it is in this, in this version, but I?
Got a page number?
Uh, it's page?
I, I hear you with the numbers, but they can only run two at any one time. You cannot have three of them going.
Why, at 3:00 on, or 2:00 on a Friday afternoon, why not? You have landscaping and nursery business going at the same time.
Not on a weekend, a weekend.
On a weekend, I agree with.
Could be Sunday.
So, my point is, I, under rules for vehicles, I have bobcats three and four identified as such in 4.4, the only bobcats allowed to operate on Sundays. Bobcat three and four will be engraved or otherwise permanently identified, visible to passor buyers, well, you can do one and two as well, but all bobcats will be engraved or otherwise permanently identified, visible to passor buyers, identifying them as such.
You're limited to two vehicles. I know it's complicated, but I'm, I'm very much in favor of having this be a landscaping permit. I would prefer not to commingle the two. That's my opinion.
And you have to have a nursery operator in your nursery bobcat, and a landscaper operator in your landscape bobcat, under your viewpoint. In my viewpoint, you can have, you can use the bobcat in either operation, as it will obviously be used, and operated by either a nursery or a landscape employee, as in fact, whoever's available will load the truck. And if it's a load of mulch for a customer down the street, then it's a nursery load, and if it actually is going to a landscape job, then it'll be a landscaping job, but they're not gonna say, hold everything, get the, get?
But maybe they should have to. We're, we're trying to create an enforceable document. I don't know how you do, I don't know how you?
That is totally, what you're suggesting is unenforceable.
10 to 3 on Sunday, our zoning.
You think the, you think the building inspector's gonna go out and look and see what bobcat is doing what?
I think we should add it.
Yeah.
If we, if we add 10 to 3:00 here, you're telling me that further restricts, it takes precedence over the 9 to 6:00?
If, with, yeah, it's, hang on, it's E, let me find out which E, should be 70, 70, 7E. There shall be no loading or use of noisy equipment on Sundays, provided that use of equipment for the loading of plant and nursery materials, which are not sold as part of landscaping services, shall be permissible between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Sundays.
I think we should add that in here. And that will take precedence, you're telling me, over the 9 to 6:00 in the special permit?
It should do.
Then I think we should add that.
There should be a court case on it, I suppose, but it should do.
So, wait, I want to try and understand, if this says not allowed here, then under the?
I was saying?
Under the Board of Appeals, and they're still allowed on the nursery side to do the hours that are allowed under that permit, is that right? Or is this saying not allowed at all? How can we dictate what's already allowed under a different permit?
The stuff in green refers to the landscaping business. We can totally dictate that.
Yes.
That is our right. The question becomes the nursery. Our zoning says 10 to 3:00. The ZBA's decision, the 2001 decision, which was as a result, which is being appealed, by the way, says Sundays 9:00 a.m. to 6:00, so.
But that's for nursery business.
Well, actually, that's for everything, where our precedent for landscaping takes precedence over that.
So I think that 10 to 3:00 should be, the reason being, and I understand all the conversations going on, and I virtually agree with both sides, but it does become, you know, the, my, beyond what we discussed already, the example is, all right, it's Sunday, is it landscaping, landscaping or nursery? Well, there's another landscaper that's coming in to pick up a load of mulch. That's nursery business, not my landscape business.
Right.
I agree with that.
So now it's totally out of the water. So, the only way we can put any teeth in the, like you say, for the building inspector ending is 10 to 3:00. Now it's 4:00, and it's all kind of equipment going off, can't do it. Simple.
And we can do it, because the zoning says we can do it.
4:00 in the morning, I'm trying to sleep on Sunday, equipment go, can't do it.
Right.
So, we're spending a lot of time on vehicles, but right now, we're just, we should be probably just at least nailing down the hours, because I don't, we have agreement on that.
So, just so you know, on Monday to Friday, I used the earlier hour that you guys had suggested, but I kept the later hour for Saturday. So Monday to Friday at 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, it's 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which is what you had wanted to do. Deliveries stay, they are what they are, emptying the dumpster is what they are.
Deliveries are deliveries in and deliveries out, and I think that they've got to be, they've got to be described.
Agreed, you specified that.
And emptying the dumpster, what about delivering the dumpster?
I don't know that it's delivered.
I don't think we should deliver deliveries from 9:00 to 2:00, Monday through Friday.
You don't, you don't?
Not, deliveries in, yes.
But not deliveries out?
I think we need to, I agree, I think we need to?
Deliveries out are, and, and the wood operation needs, needs?
I think we need to add it, to be clear.
You've got to address that, because most of the, an awful lot of the trucks are going to be carrying wood out.
So are you, what's, what, are you suggesting different?
I'm suggesting that there should be a provision for, about the wood operation.
So then my question becomes, do you want those hours to be diff, the delivery of wood to be different hours from any other delivery, and if so, what hours would you want? Because right now, there would be a delivery.
I thought, I thought they had specified when, about, when the wood would come in.
I think we need in and out.
Okay.
In's fine, 9 to 2:00.
Okay.
In is fine.
So what do you want to do for out?
8 to 4:00. You gotta get in the morning to?
My opinion is that it should really be, so it should be the same as the landscaping business, that's my opinion.
Well, I think that the wood operation, if the wood is ordered, they should make it a practice, and it should be a rule in their rule book, which we haven't seen yet, or we haven't prepared yet, but we will, that they will do everything humanly possible to deliver the wood out between the same hours as it comes in.
So you're saying 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You would deliver wood?
Monday through Friday, and, and I know that they'd say that there are special circumstances, and?
I'm not on board with the special circumstances, but we're not at that section yet.
You just, you just, in and out is good, but?
I don't, I think we did a whole section on the log for special exceptions.
What were the requested hours for these? What we have here is the green, in green is?
So the requested hours were 7:00 at 4:00, and this is the loading and use of noisy equipment, the requested hours were 7:00 to 6:00, and 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturday.
Okay, and then deliveries?
The deliveries are the deliveries. I mean, that's what the?
Are these the requested, or no?
No, the zoning doesn't give an option on deliveries?
That's deliveries in.
That's deliveries in, is what you're saying, the 9 to 2:00?
The zoning does not specify between in and out.
I see, all right, so what we're saying is that the deliveries in?
Do we have the discretion to?
Are the 9 to 2:00? Do we, can we add deliveries out?
I am looking.
That's, that's what we need to do.
Well, so it says on onsite, this is 7E again, onsite traffic, loading and deliveries, it says, deliveries to the business, to the business premises shall be scheduled so as to occur on weekdays between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and the operators shall take reasonable steps to assure compliance. We do not have any specifications on delivery out. It doesn't say that we can, and it does not say that we can't, if you see what I mean. It doesn't, it doesn't give us a limitation on that.
But of course we can.
Well, yeah.
Well, I was thinking?
It doesn't say we can't, so I think we can.
It doesn't, it doesn't give a positive or a negative.
Brian, all I was thinking was, no, I, and I know you said just, or the landscaping hours out, but I was just thinking?
I'm okay with limiting the wood hours, by the way.
But if you, if you say, I can make a delivery at 7:00 in the morning, you know, I kind of try to put things in a practical sense, that means there's guys there at quarter of 6:00 loading trucks and moving things around so they can get out of there at 7:00.
So there's a, just so you guys know, the?
That means that they're limited, that they can't do that.
But they're not allowed to do it on?
So just so you know, Alex?
It should.
There is a specification above that, that says enforceable procedures shall be specified for trucks making deliveries, and for the onsite operation of the trucks and other equipment used in the business. That does not limit the deliveries for in or out, so I would say that we can make?
Of course we can.
A limitation.
And we can say you can't load them up at quarter of 6:00, and?
So what do you want to do?
I, I think that I want a definition of noisy equipment, because all equipment is noisy, and I want a definition that the building inspector can say, this is noisy equipment, this is not noisy equipment.
I thought we already got to that point, and the building inspector said he's not getting a noise meter, so he ain't gonna?
Well, all right, and then why?
He can know that noisy equipment is a bobcat, and a chainsaw, and a leaf blower, and all of those.
I think that's fine, if, I mean, if that's what we want to say?
We got, we're done.
Bobcats, chainsaws, leaf blowers, generators.
I mean, that's all, why can't you just say landscaping business?
Well, that's what we did say.
Loading for landscaping business, take out use of noise equipment.
Why is there anybody doing anything before 7:00 a.m.?
Right.
They're not open yet.
That's true.
Right.
They don't, the sales office doesn't open until 7:00, the landscaping doesn't open until?
Well, because of Sunday, it's not allowed at all.
Well, that's fair.
The sales office is open on Sunday, but we were saying that they can't do loading or, loading or unloading, landscaping business.
Just the landscaping business.
Call it loading or unloading. But that, that does?
You've got a little problem here, in that you're saying that you can do certain nursery operations independently, and we're not controlling them, except certain nursery operations we are controlling.
And that's what I'm trying to not do.
Well, I understand that, but if we don't control nursery operations, we might as well just give up right now, because we're never going to come up with a permit that is enforceable in any reasonable manner.
Where are we missing the boat? We just, we decided, or some of us decided, or we thought we'd add, loading and use of noisy equipment slash landscaping business on Sunday from 10 to 3:00?
No, 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 we can't do landscaping business, it's nursery 10 to 3:00. Sunday 10 to 3:00.
But I, but I think, I think these are?
It's prohibited on Sunday by the zoning.
I'm agreeing with you in an indirect way. It says loading and use of noisy equipment.
Right.
Dash landscaping business. I don't, I don't think it necessarily?
Oh, because, because it was loading and use of noisy equipment dash landscaping, loading and use of noisy equipment dash nursery. So the nursery part, port, part is what is allowed from 10 to 3:00 under our zoning.
Well, then get rid of landscaping business, and put loading and use of noisy equipment 10 to 3:00.
But then you're now allowing both the landscaping and the nursery to operate from 10 to 3:00 on Sunday, is that your intent?
Yeah.
But the zoning specifically prohibits the landscaping from operating on Sunday.
Well, we gotta put another line in then.
Yeah, that's what we'd have to do.
In the zoning?
No, another line in here, timetable.
All right.
So you can point, leave the line, loading and use of noisy equipment on Sunday 10 to 3:00, and then add another line, landscaping business on Sunday, not allowed.
Okay. All right, so we have one wanting to add the nursery, we have at least one who doesn't want to add the nursery.
There's still ambiguity that's gonna happen, but at least you can say, you can't do anything before 10:00.
Or after 3:00.
We can start saying, if you got five guys, and they're jumping on the back of a truck, geez, that sure looks like landscaping business, but?
What do you want to be doing about deliveries out?
Do you think the building inspector's gonna do that?
No, I don't. But I think he could get a call and say, they're out, they're out there right now at 9:00 o'clock, tell them to stop.
Okay.
What if one of them wants to cut their lawn on Sunday?
What? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What if one of them wants to cut their lawn on Sunday?
We're not, we're not regulating those two laws.
Is that a nursery business?
Residential use.
It's a residential use.
Not if it's their own lawn.
Oh, if you're, if they're mowing their own lawn, that's not a landscaping use.
We're not taking care of 25, isn't that, the house is 24?
That's, that's cut out.
I donate, but?
Part of the land carry yard goes, goes over the 24 Forest Street lot line. So yes, it's included in the business. Had a look at the assessor's lots, so? So-
If you've got landscaping vehicles going in and out-
Yes.
I don't, I think having, I'm gonna accept wood for a minute.
Okay.
So accepting wood for a minute. If you have landscaping vehicles going in and out from seven to six and nine to five, I think you could have deliveries going out during that time as well, because I think for the most part, it's the same vehicles.
Right. But they can't load them before seven.
Right, they're not open.
Which is, you know, if you're going to have your-
Say that, didn't it say?
No, but I'm just clarifying so that we all understand-
It does, it does.
That if your vehicle is leaving at precisely at 7:00 AM in the morning-
You got it loaded at four o'clock tomorrow, that's not yesterday.
Yes, you loaded at the previous night, okay.
I, you know, it does.
Alright.
Just being in construction, I'm just thinking the practicality of it. I want you, I want you to leave, I want you out of here by five past seven.
Okay.
Why were you in here at 6:30? You told me you had to be out by five past seven, you had to put this on the truck.
So then let me clarify that deliveries in to the site will be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, not allowed on Monday through Friday. Deliveries out will be not allowed on Saturday, I mean, deliveries in will not be allowed on Saturday and Sunday. Deliveries out will be the same hours as loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscape business. So they'll be allowed out 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, and not allowed at all on Sunday. Is that what you're proposing?
So they're gonna, yeah, that makes sense.
Alright.
And then we have to talk about the firewood.
Okay, now do we want to do the wood operation the same as other deliveries?
Why doesn't the wood just fall under the same delivery?
It does, Alex suggested that he wanted to potentially limit it.
So Alex?
That gets into part of what the argument that Alex is making sometimes. Lift up that thing, dirty wooden.
I mean, I'm fine with it saying the way that I'm interested.
Who's gonna do that?
So Alex, what do you want to do about the deliveries out?
I want there to be a provision for the wood operation.
Okay, what hours do you want?
I want to hear other people's, I want suggestions actually is what I want. I want to know what the applicant suggested. I have to go and look at, no, that was rhetorical.
Yes.
But I, you know, if I knew that I was going to be asked what the wood operation hours should be, I would have gone back and looked to see what the applicant suggested. And I don't remember what it is, so I don't have an immediate suggestion now, but I do want hours for the wood operations specified.
Alright, so I'm going to put a line into the special permit. I will put in, what I'll do for now is I will put it the same as the deliveries out for the other time, but then I will also go back and look and see if we had any other information come out. Alright, so the next section, three, site plan approval, this is just-
I would get rid of number four as suggested. I don't see any reason for it.
Number four?
No business activity.
Oh, the business, I'm sorry, I was looking at the next board. You were dead, then that's fine. I put it in for your review. Alright, three, Roman numeral three, sorry, site plan approval, this is boilerplate language. Number four, zoning compliance and special permit requirements. The first thing under here is the purpose. And so I want to draw your attention to the zoning itself. It says, "The purpose of this subsection, this is one purpose under three N. The purpose of this subsection is to permit the ongoing operations of landscaping businesses." And there's a couple of qualifications it needs to meet. First, it has to be an operation on July 2012, which is fine, we've got that. It has to have existed on lots, or on lots for at least one of which a special permit pursuant to section 3A4 and/or six or use variance was enforced on July 2012. So I want to talk about that in a moment, and then the rest of purpose is actually what we've been trying to do. "This subsection is intended to make the physical layout and day-to-day operations of each such landscaping business reasonably compatible with the interests of the butters and nearby residents and their rights to reasonable quiet and enjoyment of their properties. This subsection is intended to provide and require enforceable specifics for the layout and operations of each such landscaping business in order to control dust, noise, light, and odor, to promote safety, to reduce inconvenience to neighboring residents, and to establish reasonable limits on the amount of infrastructure, equipment, and operations." So that is obviously what we've been trying to do.
That's the, um, excuse me.
That is the zoning. That is the zoning.
Would there be anything wrong with just placing that right in there?
Yes. The, that part, that section part, we can put it right there in purpose if you want to. I have, obviously changing it to this subsection to be this special permit. But I want to bring your attention to something else, and it's also under the first paragraph. "We don't have a problem with the landscaping business being in operation in 2012. We do have a question that has been raised about the special permit pursuant to sections 3A4 and/or six or use variance enforced on July 2012. Thayer Nursery does not have any use variances, so that rules that one out. 3A4 and/or six in your zoning, that refers to the specific zoning sections. 3A4 is actually allowed by right. You don't need a special permit to do the uses that are in 3A4. 3A6 refers to accessory uses to something that is allowed by right." Actually, I'm gonna read 3A4. So 3A is residence, double A, A, B, and C district uses. 3A4, I won't read all of the language because you've heard enough of me reading, but 3A4A regard, refers to agricultural, horticultural, floricultural use. B is on the five acres or less, that came in later as an amendment. Both of those are as-of-right uses and don't require a special permit. Six is an accessory use on the same lot, which is either customarily incident to any of the above permitted uses, which is one through five, or to the uses permitted in accordance with subsection seven, and that aren't detrimental to a residential neighborhood. Six, again, is an as-of-right use. You do not need a special permit for six. The special permit that the applicants have is under seven D, 3A7D, and that is the one that says, "A parcel of five acres or less, a greenhouse or nursery selling only produce raised on the premises, provided however that greenhouses and nurseries in single residence districts shall be permitted to sell only during the Christmas season, cut trees, Christmas trees, boughs, holly and wreaths grown or fabricated elsewhere than on the premises." So what I am doing is I am letting you know that a question has arisen on this purpose and also on that first preamble that says that the applicant must, or the lot or lots must have a special permit pursuant to 3A4 and/or six, and that in fact neither 3A4 nor 3A6 require a special permit. So you cannot in fact have a special permit for either of those. And I need to bring that to your attention to see if you wish to discuss it and how you wish to discuss it and what you want to do with it. I have been in contact with town council to discuss this and see the level of importance we need to give to it, and he's given me some options we can discuss, but I'd be interested in hearing any reaction from the board first.
I'll give you my reaction.
Yes.
I've written it down. Everyone knows that section three, subsection N, was intended to apply to Thayer Nursery. There was some poor draftsmanship in the article, as a result of which some might claim that the article was a totally meaningless exercise since it had no potential application to anyone. Legislation is usually not interpreted so as to be meaningless. Fortunately, such an interpretation is not necessary. Subsection N has a saving provision through the reference to section 3A6, which concerns accessory uses. The existing Thayer 1967 and 1987 special permits specifically reference disallowance of a number of accessory uses. For example, the prohibition of parking on Hillside Street and Forest Street, the requirements for mufflers on bobcats and restrictions on their use, the prohibition of floodlights, and the restrictions on power washing of trucks. In the 1987 decision, the Board of Appeals specifically references 3A6 and reserve the right for further action under section 3A6. Since the permit in fact addresses a number of accessory uses which are controlled by section 3A6, it seems clear that the permit was issued in part pursuant to section 3A6. This meets the specific requirements of the zoning, especially since the intent of the zoning enactment is so unmistakably clear, i.e., to permit Thayer to apply for a permit. An unduly literal approach, which pays no attention to the purpose of the zoning and disregards the applicability of the permits to accessory uses, must be avoided. The zoning may be badly written, but it is good enough to qualify Thayer as an applicant for a landscaping business permit. The planning board should proceed on this basis.
I disagree with that.
Well-
Or I would not have brought it up.
Your legal opinion is worth something. My legal opinion is contrary to your legal opinion.
My opinion as a member of the planning board who has reviewed the zoning and who has reviewed both the special permits and the decision, I do not see in the actual special permit granted by the boards, by the zoning board of appeals, I do not see a reference to 3A6. I bring it to your attention because it was brought to my attention and it is unfair for me to withhold information from the board that may affect your decision as you move through this. Brian?
I just, for the record, also spoke to town council about this issue. Having seen it raised in the first draft that we've reviewed, I practically speaking have some serious concerns about this because I think in addition to drafting an enforceable bylaw, or excuse me, enforceable special permit, I think we want to also be very careful to draft a special permit that will be able to withstand an appeal. And I'm very concerned that if this thing goes into an appeal situation, this specific issue with the zoning drafting could potentially make the appeal last a lot longer than a simple appeal of a typical decision. You know, practically with that in mind, and as I discussed with town council today, you know, an appeal with teeth could go on for years. A denial of this special permit, which is very much not in keeping with where I, where my head is at, would allow the applicant to come back if town meeting were to correct this, either in a special town meeting or at the Maytown meeting. That would be a substantial enough change that they could come back immediately to apply, and certainly there's been enough work and enough review of this permit that the approval could be given quickly. So from a practical standpoint, I'm concerned that we could actually be doing a disservice to the applicant by overlooking this.
If we, if we follow that process that you just described, does it open up to public meeting again? They reapply, it's a new application?
So we had, this actually came up earlier in a discussion about the Hendries project. If you remember, they'd gone for the 40B, and then there was some discussion back and forth as to whether or not they would come back to us for a special permit for the mixed use. And I had said at the time, one of the members of the Board of Selectmen had been working on those discussions, and I'd said at the time, "Look, if they come in with a complete application, we do the application review, I will be happy to hold a public hearing. All of the issues have already gone through. I'll be happy to hold a one-night public hearing, and we can go from there." I mean, the work that we've done now would get us to a substantial draft. Yes, we would have to hold another, there would have to be another application. So what the process would be is there would be either a special town, a special town meeting or an annual town meeting. The zoning would get corrected. Then we would have the, a new application, which would be substantially based on the old one, in a special permit.
Could that application actually include the special permit draft?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, that would be fair enough. We'd have, we would have a public hearing, it would be reopened to the public for comment, and actually, in some ways, that would be good because the public would have the draft in front of them, so you could comment directly on that, and then we could do it in one, maybe two nights at most, but I would say one night.
Would that be grounds for an appeal? I mean-
Of course it could be appealed.
Everything would be appealed.
No, 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 but I know, of course, but I mean, realistic.
Yeah.
You know, here, you submitted an application, went through it for a year, now you're gonna tell me you're gonna submit a similar application and you're gonna go through it one night?
So the-
I mean, you and I know the understanding behind it, but still there's the public that says that this is a different application now. It should merit the same time and scrutiny that the other one did.
Having said that, there are many towns who go through their special permit applications a lot faster than a year, but that's neither here nor there. The fact of changing the zoning would allow, so normally if we denied a special permit for many applicant, there would be a two-year waiting period before they could reapply, but if the town meeting voted to change the zoning, that would open up the ability to reapply earlier based on the fact that the zoning was materially changed. So if, in our opinion, this is a material change and this is a direction that we want to go to, I did, because that is, having a special town meeting is one of our options, I did take the precaution of putting myself on the selectman's agenda for Monday night to request a special town meeting if that is the direction the board would go in, because it makes it a lot faster process, the faster I get in front of the Board of Selectmen.
Would that be for this coming town meeting?
No, it's too late. It was, unfortunately, it was too late when we, when this was brought to my attention to put a special town meeting within the town meeting because of the noticing requirements for a special town meeting. So my guess is the earliest it would be, given the holidays, is January. So, Brian?
This is a question you may not be able to answer on process, but is there an ability to reference public record from a previous application in a new application?
I think we probably could, so that we could refer to the materials that had already been submitted. Certainly when we reopened the public hearing, they submitted for, in March, they submitted a new application, and we referred to the previous public hearing. We just sort of said, "Look, we'll take everything that was there." If there's been a several month period in between, I'm not sure that we could do that in quite the same way. But the fact that we would have a draft special permit that the public could specifically comment on, again, one, maybe two nights, I don't think we would have to spend that same amount of time.
I assume all the same material could be submitted on a separate basis.
They could submit all the same material, yeah, absolutely. And the updated plans that they would have to do anyway.
I think what Alex described earlier, I think, I mean, to take it to an extreme just to make my point, I mean, if we spelled something wrong in it to say, "Well, you can't give them the permit," then because you spelled it wrong, you're weighing that against the entire intent of something. I think that's, and I think, you know, like the Constitution, expedient trial, I mean, I think the applicant should have the ability to have some input here because, I mean, they're just asking for a decision.
If I had thought it was at the level of the typo, I wouldn't have mentioned it. I thought it was substantial enough to bring to the board's attention.
I think the intent of the-
Yeah, the intent is certainly something that's out there.
Significantly.
Yeah.
My concern on, sorry, Alex, my intent on, my concern about intent in the matter is the court could very well side with the intent and go forward with that. If it does not, it could take three years to get to that decision, and if the court overrules the, the permit, there's still two more years on top of that, they have to wait to refile.
Alex?
I would point out that if this goes to another town meeting, if we tell Thayer, "Go make business plans, alternative business plans for the next X amount of time to conduct your landscape business someplace other than your nursery yard." And this has to go probably to the annual town meeting, and then it goes to the Attorney General for approval, which takes three or four months, and then they have to file an application. And I certainly, I mean, I'm not going to hash out a special permit if it's for nothing, just for their application. We've begun to discuss this special permit, but we've gotten, haven't gotten into any of the so-called conditions yet, and there are plenty of comments I have on those. So there is hardly anything that could be attached to a special permit application. People will have a right to comment, and then we'll be back where we are probably a year from now. And I think that Thayer can't wait that, that sort of time. And even if it did, once we issue the permit, it still can be appealed. And I personally think that this is not a very good appellate issue for someone challenging the permit. It is, it's an issue. It's an arguable issue. And certainly, if Thayer were asked whether or not they were willing to take the chance, fine, ask them. But I was involved in this zoning, and I know what the intent was, and I am very comfortable with the fact that it is partially based on the accessory uses, the disallowance of accessory uses. It's, in my view, it's, this is something that if the board were to tell Thayer to get lost, they would be making a huge mistake, and it would be a huge disservice to the town.
I think to categorize it as telling Thayer to get lost is a mischaracterization.
I would agree.
Let me, let me think through a scenario. If we move forward with this, it's appealed, and it takes a year, and in the meantime, they've got their permit, and in the meantime, we amend at a future town meeting the bylaw, then sometime thereafter, the court comes back and says, "The permit's denied because of the appeal." Why can't Thayer Nursery come back the next day and reappear, uh, reapply? Why can't they?
Under the new zoning.
Under the new zoning?
That is certainly an option.
You move the target, it's a new thing, I can right back and apply.
So it's, it probably does-
But the bottom line is it's really unfair to the applicant. It's like throwing a guy in jail, like, I like scenarios to make my points, but it's like throwing a guy in jail and say, "Well, we're gonna give you a trial." "When are you gonna give me the trial?" "Well, we'll get back to you on that."
That is certainly a possibility, is that you could, the board could rather go ahead and vote to approve the special permit, and then in the meantime, move to correct the issue. By the time an appeal comes in, if that appeal is denied, or if that appeal is upheld and Thayer's permit is denied, they would be able to come in because it was new zoning or corrected zoning and reapply. That would certainly be an option.
I think that makes good sense for the reasons that people have discussed. The purpose, I think, and intent was pretty clear at town meeting. There was overwhelming support, but this has been raised as a potential, what I view as sort of a technical, maybe misunderstanding or mistake, but that you would just, that the impact that could have on the business by another year's delay would be significant. And it goes completely against the intent to have that kind of impact, I believe. So I think my suggestion is a very good one.
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, does everybody else wish to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
That case, Ned, could you, you come forward, or you and Josh, can I get him forward?
Thank you. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the applicants with Josh and Maggie Oldfield, I agree, four square A with everything that Alex just said. There's no question there's going to be an appeal of this permit. There's already been an appeal of the town meeting action to establish the bylaw. There have been appeals of every, every permit, every decision-
There have been appeals of every, every permit, every decision, both ways, there'll be more appeals. So it's an issue of appeal, and it is clearly arguable enough that it is a winnable argument on appeal, just as it may be a loseable argument on appeal. I think the board would do an extraordinary disservice to the town. It'd slap town meeting in the face if it was to decide on a technical issue that it didn't have the authority to issue this permit. I think the clear and best approach is what Mike suggested and what Cheryl has agreed is to go forward if the board is inclined to finish the negotiations on the special permit and grant the permit and allow the process to unfold, the town meeting to correct. There may be other issues in this permit that get raised on appeal that ought also to be corrected, because the clear, at the end of the day, the clear intent of town meeting was to allow this opera, this business to operate. They wanted it to operate and behave and have stricter guidelines about how they were operating. But the clear intent, overwhelming intent, I said it early on, a thousand to three, you know, you needed a two-thirds vote. And it is highly unusual, as Brian Walsh said, for there not to be a standing vote, if there's any voice vote, for no. And there was no standing vote. I think the precinct voted loud and clear when they voted to elect Maggie as a member of town meeting. She was the highest vote getter, and they voted loud and clear not to elect Phil Johanning in that same election as a member of town meeting. There's overwhelming support, and I think the board owes the town the obligation to finish this business, to issue the permit, to establish the conditions, and if there are issues like this and others that need to be corrected, they ought to be given the opportunity to be corrected at a future town meeting. And that would correct any deficiency that might exist with respect to any appeal.
So Mike's discussion or proposal to move forward and then at the same time correct it, special town meeting is one that you would endorse?
Absolutely.
Do we have to make that decision right now?
No, no, not at all, because we're still going through some of the conditions, so we can, you know, we'll probably, with luck, finish up on the fifth. So, but you do not have to make that decision right now. Brian?
I just want to address what was just said. I just want to make clear, first of all, I, I don't think anyone's questioning the intent. I think everyone is sitting here acknowledging it. And I think this board has worked very hard to honor that intent. So to imply otherwise, and I'm not insinuating that you did, but to imply otherwise would be a disservice to this board. I just feel like we need some basis upon which to move forward. So if we could have Alex's language reviewed by town council-
Town council has reviewed Alex's language.
Okay.
Give it to him this morning.
Thank you. I would just like some sort of language to, upon which we can have something referenced about this and-
I have an email from town council giving out the two possible options that the board could take and the implications of both options, which I will hand out to you in a moment.
Okay.
Josh, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just have two questions.
Yeah.
First of all, why are we dealing with this now?
Yeah.
At the last minute? That's my question, number one, when obviously it was no. Number two is, is it going to take the three-month period again from the AG's office? That's a concern.
Yeah.
And number three is, I don't know if we can afford it. So those are my three concerns. It's just frustrating as an applicant that we've gone through this whole process, an expenditure of money, imposition on us, and all the other BS that we've gone through to find out now at the 12th level.
So that's a very valid point. I don't disagree with any of your frustration. I think it's frustrating for anybody who is put into this situation, certainly not where I would have wanted to be at this stage in the process. It's brought up now because we're at the point of the findings. I actually found out, or it was brought to my attention just before the, fairly soon before the last night of the public hearing. It is not a public hearing matter in that it is relevant to the board's own findings, it's not relevant to what you were proposing. I have been working with town council, I've actually spoken to Alex, I've spoken to Ned, back to town council, trying to figure out what the different options were, what the, what actions the board could take and what those implications were. It didn't make sense to bring it up until I had an idea of what those were, and I have been looking at every possibility in talking to town council to see what the others are. I am deeply aware of the intent of town meeting, and in bringing this issue up, it is not my, well, it's not where I would have wanted to be with this. But I do recognize that because it's there, it, this question impacts the decision that the board has to make, and it's not fair to keep it from the board. It also, of course, as with anything else that comes before the board, it can be appealed, and it impacts the appeal. And for that reason, it impacts the town. And as Chair of the Planning Board, I have a duty to both the other members of the board and to the town as a whole to bring forward anything like this that's brought to my attention.
Yeah, I'm not questioning you.
Yeah, and I know you're not, but I just want to make this clear. I understand it is difficult for you, and that's why we brought you forward to talk with us.
Well, I think you guys have known about this. How long ago was the last public hearing? How many weeks ago?
It would be about, this is three N's, so it'd be two weeks back, four weeks back? It would be the last one. Yeah, Cheryl, I know.
So four weeks ago?
Yeah.
You knew about this?
Mm-hmm.
And when did we learn about this?
Well, I learned about it four weeks ago.
Yeah. So when did we learn about this?
When I talked to you about it.
Yes, today.
I know.
Today.
I would just, hang on, Cheryl, she's talking.
So you want to know what my comments would be?
Yes.
My comments would be totally X-rated at this moment at every single one of you for allowing this to happen.
You should not blame the other members of the board, they did not know until this week, when the first draft went out. The only other person that knew, besides Alex, Ned, and myself, the town council and the town administrator, because if there's any element that requires, that affects potential litigation, it's my duty to inform them. Cheryl, and I, I understand that your comments would be X-rated. I do not dispute that.
This also affects some other decisions that we have made with the town, in other BS decisions by the building inspector. So we made commitments to the town in court based on this. So now what do we do?
We move forward.
Cheryl wanted to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd like to find-
Do you agree a mistake was made?
Yeah.
And was the timing bad?
It's a mistake, it's not your mistake.
Right.
We move forward.
Do we deserve to know earlier?
Oh, I can't answer.
I don't, I don't think it was a mistake, it was a-
I'm just saying, okay, should we have been known earlier that this was a problem?
I'd like to suggest-
All of you, hold on. Cheryl's been waiting for some time to speak. Cheryl, speak, and then let's move forward.
I mean, I'd just like to say, I think everyone, this I just learned about a day or two ago, and been trying to understand the question and the issue, and even whether I'm allowed to deliberate-
You are allowed to deliberate, that has been confirmed, yes.
Which we did get clarification from town council on. But what I would like to say here is that what Mike has suggested, I'd like to have us agree on a path forward. We can't erase what's been done, and we, we need to find a path forward. And I think what Mike's suggestion and Ned supports, I think we should talk to town council about that. And if that's not one of the options that he presented to you, ask him why that's not a good option. And then if necessary, do we need another opinion other than town council? I mean, Alex is an attorney, Ned's an attorney, they have their opinions about this. Do we need someone else's opinion? Because it has such significance. I mean, I think what's been suggested that could delay and could have significant cost to the applicant is not something we should take lightly.
Yeah.
Just like having something which might be a problem on appeal. I mean, as we understand, any decision can get appealed. So that we're going to give that more weight than the significant impact on the applicant, I don't think is right.
The, and I just, I don't know, I'm just, I'm wasting time, but I kept saying that we need to move forward relative to the applicant. It's not, it's unfair to them to just keep this going, and go, and go, and go. But I think, and I'm not to jump on with their attorney, but I agree that we owe it to the town of Milton. The town of Milton at the town meeting decided that they should have the right to apply this permit, and that we should be the deliberating party to make a decision on whether they should get it or not. So we owe it to the people of Milton, the town of Milton, the media, the town meeting members, to make it happen. And it's been said by multiple people, multiple times, there's probably something else in here you could appeal on to, so.
So you're comfortable moving, yes, Ned, you want to speak? And you're comfortable moving forward, yeah?
I am, and I know we have to speak about those options.
Yes.
But to speak specifically to Cheryl's suggestion about another opinion, at the end of the day, the only, the only opinion that is going to matter is the opinion of the appeals court. Because they're going to hear from both sides, from multiple sides, over the next several years on an appeal. So that's the, that's the only opinion that's going to matter. It doesn't matter whether Alex, because Alex and I can be on one side agreeing, you know, we know that Butter's counsel's going to be on another side with his own opinion. That's going to all take time to filter through the court system. We know there's going to be an appeal. So I think the most expeditious and the most appropriate use of available resources, including the enormous expenditure of resources that their nursery and the Oldfield family has gone through, is to finish the job. Decide on the merits of the application, whether you should grant or deny a permit. If on the merits you want to grant the permit, grant the permit with the conditions that you determine. And then it gets appealed. And whatever happens in the interim of the appeal, including moving forward with technical corrections to the zoning, can happen. Maybe obviate whatever appeal may, may happen.
To hopefully put you maybe in a better frame of mind, I think if we move forward, we make a decision, this thing should be appealed, and the appeal be held up, and they deny the permit, I think we would owe you what, an expedient reapplication.
Brian, you had a comment?
Because it would be a fault of your own.
I just want a path.
Okay.
So if you have two options, I want to hear it there.
All right, so well, our two options is, the first possible vote is a grant of a special permit with conditions, exactly what we've just been talking about. That is option number one. And obviously, the, if the special permit were to be appealed, the issues would include what town meeting had intended to do, clearly intended to refer to Section 3A7 rather than 3A4 or 6. And I'll give you this language, I'm paraphrasing. Second possible vote would be a denial of the application. Basis of the denial would be perhaps the uncertainty of 3A, the question that I've raised, 3A4 and 6. So in either event, town council says that 3N should be amended at a future town meeting. So if you want to path forward, I think the initial, I think you've got two options. You could deny it right now. I think what I'm hearing from everybody is that you're not sensing that that is fair to the applicant or to town meeting, and certainly, given the amount of time and energy the applicant has put in, we've put in, that town meeting put in, and looking at this, denial is, it's a hard vote. Your other path is, our other path as the board, is to grant the special permit and make the changes. One possibility is, is, has been presented, is that appeals take quite some time, and it may well be by the time the appeal actually even gets to the court, it's already been corrected by the special permit, and that can be noted. So you had a-
I think hearing the two options was helpful. And for me, the reason why is because I think the question has been, how does this survive? In my mind, the question has been for me, how do we create something that will have legs to withstand an appeal? Okay? By hearing your two options, what I heard in your second option was my missing piece, which is the, how does it survive an appeal in the other direction? How does this board deny a permit that would be able to sustain an appeal from the applicant to suggest that it shouldn't have been appealed? And I think the very fact that we can rely on the intent from that standpoint, knowing that the intent would be a strong defense in the applicant's favor on an appeal, that for me, gives me the path to say, you know, as much as intent is the secondary way I'd like to do this, I think the intent was clear, I think most people in this room are acknowledging that, and it gives me a great deal of comfort.
So there are four of us that would need to vote on this going forward, and what I'd like to know is if all four of you, well, all three of you plus me are comfortable moving ahead with the special permit process that we've been doing. Brian, I think you've just indicated yes. Mike, you've indicated yes. Alex, you're comfortable moving forward with the special permit?
I'm comfortable going forward with it, but I do say that the special permit will have to contain a very significant defense of our position, because it has been raised, and we have to be comfortable that we're going forward because, because we have the right to go forward.
That's, couldn't have said it better.
And I, and I want to clarify, again, I'm not asking whether or not you're voting in favor of the special permit, because we haven't finished going through the conditions. And as Ned pointed out, we need to make our decision on the merits of it. But I am asking if you are comfortable moving forward with the process that we've established with the special permit. All right. Then if the three of you are comfortable moving forward, then I am also comfortable moving forward with what we have now.
I have suggested language for the zoning amendment, and I specifically request that you do not ask that Section 6 be stricken from the, from subsection N, because that would-